Good evening. I will call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 19th. Just a quick note that the mayor is out. She has COVID. She will be attending remotely and I'll be running the meeting this evening. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll?
Kelly Clark. Deputy Mayor Amy Lam.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Retuja Endupure.
Here.
Councilmember Oshin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Howe, can you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We all know the words, we could do it fast.
Councilmember Stewart, can you please read the land acknowledgement?
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. The agenda is approved. Next up is public comment.
We'll start here in the room.
Thanks, Lita.
First, we have Paul Quinn.
... impacts global warming by reducing tonnage sent to the landfill and more importantly reduces organics in the landfill which create methane gas emissions. My statements are based on emails, data, and the Republic contract received from the city of Samamish staff and through public record requests. Can the city, working with Republic services, be more active in getting our residents and businesses to recycle and compost more and reduce the 36% of our disposables that go to the landfill? Let's start with households. It would be great if the city would provide to Republic educational materials which then Republic, at their cost, would mail to households in Samamish. Then apartments. It would be terrific if Republic would annually call or visit each Samamish apartment manager at Republic's cost and review how their apartment could do more recycling and composting. Lastly, what if the city could require, at no added cost to the city, Republic to contact each Samamish business to address concerns and provide onsite recycling, education, and training? The great news is we have all these actions in our current contract with Republic. Congratulations to the city staff for negotiating these valuable mechanisms. As my handout will show, the city's current contract with Republic requires Republic to take these actions. When I asked our city staff about documented contract compliance by Republic, I received several glossy PDFs, but nothing that documents compliance for these important intervention opportunities. We have all the tools we need to evaluate how we're doing to drive recycling improvement. But these tools are not being used. The contract the city has right now with Republic could drive substantial reductions in what we send to the landfill and positively reduce our impact on global warming. Each of us in this city can positively impact climate change now. We need our city council to use this existing Republic contract to assure each person in Samamish does the very best they can to mitigate the effects of global warming. Your leadership changes our future. I would like somebody to contact me about what we'll do as I'm committed to follow up on this important matter. A sense of urgency matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Randolph.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Randolph. I'm a candidate for city council and I live at 85, 222nd Place Southeast. Earlier this year, the city council authorized the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, also authorized with staff availability to support the effort and the cost for Baker Tilly's three employees. I find this concerning, given that city council members being elected for four years allowed this citizens' task force only four meetings to come up with the recommendations to close the gap the city council created. I do recognize that past few city councils have had a hand in the fiscal challenges we face and I understand that not all members of the current city council have been in office for a full term. But that being said, managing the finances of the city is the primary job of city council. I've had opportunity to watch the four meetings of the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force. The citizens who participated have done a phenomenal job and should be recommended or should be commended for participating. However, I learned more about how we got here from an article Dodd-Gerand wrote in The Samamish Independent on October 27, 2021 than I learned from the task force meetings. In the past few years, our property taxes have skyrocketed. One of the wealthiest cities in the state, how is this possible that we need to further raise taxes to close the gap? People don't mind paying taxes as long as they receive value. But value is hard to determine these days, when it costs so much to remove a dead or hazardous tree or when it takes over a year to get a permit to open or expand a business. Many have come to realize there are driving forces behind the scenes and the citizens of Samamish are not in the driver's seat. Our voices are not being heard. Did Baker Tilly understand that the spending levels in the past few years were not indicative of the historic spending of the city? Were the estimates based on the years attributed to divisive government to include lawsuits, expensive litigation, contract payouts, and traffic surveys with multiple revisions? Why are city expenditures and controls reductions not looked at until 2025? We are experiencing the challenge now. I can assure you, I would not wait two years to look for savings if this deficit was in my household. I hope the recommended reductions will focus on optimizing delivery versus reduction of critical services. Even still, the savings pale in comparison to the proposed tax increases. And once taxes are increased, our city government will always find a way to utilize the revenue. We have already lost residents because they have been taxed out of Samamish. I do agree with Dodd-Gerand. We need a paradigm shift in thinking on the city council in Samamish. We were once a model of a local city governments. I hope we can return to that and thrive again. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Paul Stickney.
Good evening, city council members and the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force. The infamous Paul Stickney here. Now, what I want to talk about here is that kind of lays some truths on the line, in my opinion. Our community has never faced its number one ailment since incorporation, which is deciding optimal direction for housing supplies, local services, and multimodal transportation. And these decisions have to be based on sufficient information that are accurate and fair and then contrast over 40 disparate outcomes based on different ideological directions. Currently, our Samamish budget has roughly a $45 million reserve and will likely have more at the end of this year. I mention this because it's not essential to do this work today. I think what's more essential is to decide our direction as a community that will last for generations first, that will have huge impacts on the budget. So which housing, service, transportation, and directions are best? Is it what happened for the first 17 years in our city who minimized housing significantly below King County numbers and what the community needs were? Or is it from the years 2018 to 2022 that even tried to lower the bar significantly more and cut housing back further? Or is it citizen initiative to enrich, sustain, and stay by adding types of housing we're short on and lessening future amounts of housing that we have oversupplies of relative to our economic, demographic, and workforce makeup? Which path is best? The outcomes are radically different in all three. There's no contest or there's no argument that housing supplies in Samamish don't meet generational housing needs. And generational housing needs are lifetime and legacy for people that live here and for future generations. We're mostly a one-trick pony when it comes to housing. So, public comments were submitted to the task force. I know, I turned them in. But I suggested adding 6,000 more units to the town center that were diverse and smaller with holistic, low-impact, net positive benefits associated. Read the three comments, they're all online. This 6,000 number, by the way, is well below the bare minimum needed to meet lifetime and generational needs for our economic, demographic, and workforce makeup. So, I think we need to face which direction our community goes on housing services and transportation first and then judge whether we change the budget and add tax burden to our residents. Appreciate the chance to speak, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to make public comment? Seeing none. Who do we have online, Lita?
If you wish to provide public comment, please raise your hand. If calling by phone, press star nine. I see one commenter currently. Mary Whitaker.
Hi, good evening, city council. This is Mary Whitaker, Samamish, for 23 or more years. I wanted to reiterate tonight that you've got upcoming critical areas ordinance, existing condition, and protection of natural features which are in Samamish. On 7/20/2023, I actually sent the map folio that King County had done from 1990 and updated for 1998. The city did adopt that map and those layers and many of those are available online at the city's interactive maps and also in maps that are produced on the city website under the GIS. And then also, I've showed recently the steep slopes, which is included in the current cop plan, which was developed between 2012 and 2015. Although it's based on 2003 data, the soils and the geologic conditions have been around for the last 10,000 years, so those really haven't changed. And those areas need particular identification and protection. And then, I also gave you a copy of the GeoHazards Map, so you can learn where they're located. They're located from where the plateau starts at 500 feet elevation, drops to about 30 feet elevation along the Samamish shoreline. So it's pretty much along the west edge of the city. And those are particularly important. There are a lot of areas that are protected because when newer developments occurred, they put their open space there. So that's where you see the trees on the maps. We need, it's got the vegetated aerial overlays. So what I emailed in today was just a one-page. It happens to be a Tamarack drainage area, which includes George Davis Creek, north of Tamarack, and to the south, Zaccoose Creek. The city does own the parcel, which is sort of tracked a not really open space because it's before subdivision, but the city bought that. There have been landslides there in 2008. Multiple ones were mentioned in the Inglewood Sub Basin Plan. And then Zaccoose Creek lies just south of Thompson Hill Road. And there was a landslide there in 2015 that could have nearly taken out the road if somebody hadn't reported it. They didn't actually report the flooding. They reported the trees that had already fallen on the road. It was on a Sunday when there was football going on. So the city had to clean that up. That was a $1.3 million fix that took three years for it to actually occur. Then in 2017, prior city council and mayor people had let me know that there was a landslide that occurred just a little bit above 206th Avenue Northeast where it went almost into Zaccoose Creek and almost completely closed it off. There have been multiple landslides on the hill there where I live, off Northeast 4th Street. Those occurred because there's a lot of surface water that runs down. There's no place for it to go. There was also a landslide in 2021, which went about halfway down the steep hill up by George Davis Creek, above the property where the city now owns. And there's also been, on the next street down, there's been landslides there that have been reported by other people. So, just in the area of the map that I sent in tonight, I've marked in orange, there are seven to eight landslides that have occurred in the last 10, 15 years. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of those to be prepared for the upcoming meetings. Thank you.
I see no other public commenters. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So, next up is our Fiscal Sustainability Plan. It looks like a full house here. Staff, consultants, and the task force. Would you like to kick us off, Scott?
There we go. You'd think I'd know how to do that by now. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to kick this off. As you'll recall, council authorized the formation of a citizen community task force to help us look at our fiscal situation and come up with some recommended path forward. And recall that this task force is technically designed to make a recommendation to me as the city manager. And so, this is step one in what our eventual Fiscal Sustainability Implementation Plan will be. And so, from that perspective, I really want to say a huge thank you to all of our community members that came to the table and worked through a fairly large volume of information over the summer when it was nice out, had some robust discussions, and came to a really well-thought-out and fought over, if you will, conclusion. And I can't thank the community members enough and I want to commend them for all their hard work on this to kick it off. So thank you all so much. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our consultants, Steve Toler and Sam Lieberman.
Great, thanks, Scott. And council members, it's nice to see you again. And by way of reminder, my name is Steve Toler. I'm a director with Baker Tilly. The last time I think I was in front of you was with management partners and we merged in with Baker Tilly in October of last year. So, same firm, same people doing the same work. So, just new name. Alongside me here is Sam Lieberman. Sam is a senior manager with the firm and serves as the project manager on this assignment. And both of us are going to just tee up the conversation for you tonight in terms of the unanimous consensus recommendation that the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force came up to. I got to tell you, we're going to be at the International City Managers Association meeting in a couple of weeks down in Austin, Texas. And I just have, I am going to proclaim wonderful things about the city of Samamish and the task force and the work that you all did. You really came together and were able to provide some good insights in terms of, and ask great questions and had some great, you know, concerns about where the city is and where the city's going. But ultimately, it was great to work alongside you and support you in the recommendation that you've made to the city manager. So, with that, we have a quick slide deck that we just want to use as eye candy, as I like to call it, as we go through this conversation tonight. And basically, what we want to just cover for you is just to discuss the project, you know, kind of the background and the overview of it and, you know, just kind of the context by which the task force came together. We'll share with you the process that the task force went through to come up with their recommendation. And we'll highlight and overview and summarize the recommendations that the task force made. But we really want to make sure that we're able to turn it to the task force members for any comments and feedback and input that they have in terms of the experience and ultimately the recommendation that they made to the city manager. So with that, I'll ask, is it Mike, maybe? That's moving the slides forward. Go ahead and go one more. Just by way of background, remember the last time that I was with you was to give you a, basically, an overview of kind of the forecast. And remember that whenever we do financial forecasts, the numbers never sleep. And what's key is just making sure that the numbers are continuing to be reviewed and updated. And I know staff is committed to using the forecast on an ongoing basis to review how things are coming in in terms of revenues, what expenditure trends are happening, and whatnot and whatnot. And so, the timing in which the forecast was developed was based on the information that we had best known at the beginning of, end of '22, beginning of '23. And of course, time has ticked since then. And so, the forecast will continue to be updated. That said, there are some things that are contributing to the city's potential fiscal gap that exists in the future years. And so, if we can go to the next slide, I just want to capture some of those. And you all understand this. And I think that the community members, perhaps in some cases, do understand this and other cases might not. But, you know, cities by and large are funded through a variety of taxes and fees and charges, of course. The largest of which you have, the single largest, is property tax, which as you know, Washington State is a levy state. And based on state law, you are only allowed to counsel manically, as the term of art is, allowed to increase that by 1% on an annual basis. And that's not 1% per each household. It's 1% in total, total revenues. And so, your largest revenue source can only grow by 1%, where you know the cost of providing services, especially in inflationary times and with the need that you have to maintain the infrastructure that you have and the other, you know, cost of services grows at a faster rate than that. And so, there's always this variance between the resources upon which a city can rely to provide the services that they provide and then the potential growth of those costs on an ongoing basis. Thankfully, for the work that you all have done and previous councils have done, you have been very prudent when it comes to your financial reserves and you have been able to maintain reserves at a good level. The question becomes, is that something that is sustainable on an ongoing basis, based on the information that we know today? Without the assumption of one-time, you know, revenue surpluses that may come in or, you know, vacancies and staffing levels, et cetera. And so, I think that, you know, the issue really at hand is what is the fiscal gap show for the future? And if we go to the next slide with the latest revisions that were made to the forecast, remembering again that numbers never sleep, is that the general fund by which provides the most basic and important services that you're providing to this community shows a variance. And it shows that there is a fiscal gap, which is a difference between the revenue resources that you have on an ongoing basis and the expenditures upon which you provide services. And there's this structural imbalance that has existed. It's existed for many years. Through one-time revenue sources and other expenditure savings, you have been able to, you know, maintain your reserve levels at a positive level. The question becomes, is that something that can be really relied upon in future years? And as we look at the forecast based on some realistic and yet conservative assumptions on both the revenue and expenditure side, we see that there is this fiscal gap that exists on the right-hand side where there would be a gap that can grow from $4 million up to about $21 million if it was not addressed. And of course, as you know, Washington State law does not allow a city to pass a budget that would fully deplete your reserves. And if this, of course, were to continue, you know, based on what the forecast shows, you would fully deplete those reserves by 2029. And we know that you're not going to do that and you don't want to do that. And the question becomes, what is the, to what extent do budget strategies need to be implemented to address this gap, to maintain your reserve levels at a minimum reserve goal, which you currently have, which is 10% of revenues and/or at a, what we would recommend as a target reserve of up to 25% of operating expenditures? And as you see on this chart, whether it's 10% of revenues or 25% of expenditures, the gap exists and the gap will need to be addressed to take care of that. And so, if we go to the next slide, the next phase of this project then was to develop a set of recommended budget strategies for your consideration. And the process that we went through with that in consultation with the city manager and ultimately with your approval was to formulate a Fiscal Sustainability Task Force that was made up of residents of the community to help inform the city manager ultimately of the budget strategies that the council will want to consider for future consideration as the forecast continues moving forward and to get ahead of the curve so that you're not, you know, sitting behind the eight ball and wondering, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? And so, that's really what this process is about. And so, with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Sam. And we want to talk with you then a little and share with you a little bit about the formation of the task force. We're going to briefly share that with you and some of the evaluation criteria that they use in reviewing various strategies that were identified and ultimately then what the recommendation was and then to hear from them. So, Sam, go ahead.
Thank you, Steve, council. Thank you for having us. Mike, if you'd like to advance the slide one more, so this, I can't say it any better than Scott or Steve already have. This task force has been amazing over the last couple of months and the work that they've done. And we've done this in quite a number of jurisdictions now and by far the best work of any community task force that we've had the pleasure of working with. As mentioned, we met with the task force over four meetings. The first two were informational sessions, background on what fiscal sustainability planning is, municipal finance 101, to give them some understanding of what governmental budgeting looks like. Then we talked about the city services provided here in Samamish and how they are funded and what the general fund forecast was showing in the slide that Steve just talked about. And then we really got into the meat of the discussion. And the task force had the opportunity to review the budget strategies that we developed that you all have also had Steve presented to you all last year, I believe, through discussions with you, discussions with staff, through our own work that we've done in Washington State and our understanding of those options. And so, they had 20 or so budget strategies that they reviewed and reflected on and discussed, a robust discussion at the meeting on the 27th. And from those budget strategies, we did some homework in leading up to the August 10th meeting to evaluate those strategies and identify which strategies they may be in favor of supporting to help close that fiscal gap that Steve just talked about. So, the August 10th meeting, we got down to brass tacks and staff were able to, or the task force was able to discuss and review how they evaluated those strategies. And we'll talk about how they did that. We are at that 19th meeting where the task force is going to present the recommendations to the city manager and then to you all leading up to the November 14th council meeting. Mike? So, thinking about how that framework for evaluating strategies, and this is what the task force really reflected on as they were looking at the strategies. They wanted to think, we encouraged them to think about it, both the fiscal impact that that strategy may have and how difficult it may be to implement, right? And so, if it has got a low fiscal impact and is going to be hard to implement, is that worth something that is pursuing, for instance? And so, that is one element of evaluating the budget strategies. And on the next slide, in thinking about the difficulty of implementation, they thought about a number of different factors. Is it something that the community values? Is it a technical and operational feasibility for a city? What does timing look like? And so, the task force really had a lot to think about. In addition to, the next slide, Mike. In addition to, the next slide, Mike, some really thoughtful considerations around timing. How might it impact other initiatives on the ballot? What are the legislative requirements just to get something on the ballot? What can the city control, right? How might it affect the business community? So the, the task force not only had to take in all of this new information about budgeting, all of this new information about these various strategies, but then also pair that with, you know, how, how should we decide what, what factors, what strategies we may want to ultimately recommend? So in the next slide, Mike, how did, how did they come to consensus? Well, I talked about homework that the task force was given and they took home a spreadsheet and independently ranked the priorities, the strategies by priority. They had the opportunity to determine whether they would pursue it as a priority or not at all and a spectrum in between. They did that independently and provided those responses to, to Baker Tilly, to us. We consolidated those, those priority rankings and presented them back to the task force at the August 10th meeting so they could see where each of them individually ended up in terms of identifying how they would prioritize a particular strategy. We went through each strategy and their, and their prioritization together so they could review and discuss what, what each other thought in terms of how they might prioritize strategies and, and really had a thoughtful discussion at the conclusion of reviewing those, and those strategies independently about a combination of strategies that received the most support and how they might package those to close the fiscal gap. We used our fiscal model tool in, in the meeting with the, with the task force to really start to play with the dials of what does, how does this affect our general fund reserves in terms of which strategies we make, may recommend? The timing of when we may recommend them and how that might affect the general fund reserves. And through that discussion and the turning of the dials, a proposal, a proposal was made of a, of a recommendation of strategies that, that we'll get into. And we did a, a thumbs up, thumbs down voting in terms of that particular proposal and had a consensus thumbs up from, from the task force on those particular recommendations. And so Mike, if we look at the next slide and the next one, the, the recommendations that the, the task force developed are shown here and I want to talk about each of them. The first one, most importantly, the task force thought, you know, it was important for the city to put some skin in the game as well if they were going to ask residents to, to increase taxes, which, which are a couple of the options that, that they recommended. And so, you know, really the first and most important recommendation was that over a period of, of three years, the city would reduce expenditures by about a million dollars with the focus on maintaining, maintaining services and especially public safety services. In addition to that, the task force came to a consensus recommendation on implementing a utility tax of 6% on a number of utilities, as you see there, and doing so in 2026. And that timing was thoughtful, as we discussed, in terms of legislative requirements to get initiatives on a ballot and, and other operational activities. That would generate about $11 million in revenues, which would in essence buy time until the recommendation to submit to the voters, the creation of a metropolitan park district, which would fully support the costs of, of park, of park services that you provide and would generate about $5 million. The implementation of those three, the combination of those three strategies would allow the city in 2027 to begin investing in capital infrastructure. And so yes, you are asking your residents to, or they would recommend asking the residents to increase taxes on themselves, but it would also allow the city to fund needed capital improvements to the tune of about $5 million per year, starting in 2027. The task force also identified a number of additional contingency strategies and, and we show the timing as depending on need, and this goes back to the conversation that Steve had, the fiscal model and the fiscal reality of the city changes, right? And the, the staff has committed to using the fiscal model on an ongoing basis to understand what the fiscal reality of the city is. And it may be, for instance, that if you implement a particular strategy, you don't need to implement another strategy down the road, right? Or fiscal reality might be that you, you do need to implement additional strategies. And so they wanted to identify some additional contingency strategies that you could have in the back pocket were the reality of, of the city such that, that you would need it. But it also may be that you don't need it or that you don't need perhaps the metropolitan park district, right? So continuing on an ongoing basis to use the model to understand where you are and, and what, what needs there are, but wanted to include those contingency strategies. And again, these were the consensus recommendation from the task force of, that you see here and, and two that are not with 10 thumbs up, which, which was very exciting when it happened. Next slide. So this is the, putting some pictures to, to what the, the task force recommended. The slide to the left shows to your general fund reserves and the blue line as it goes up is without implementing capital funding. And so the red line as it goes down is when you do the $5 million per year capital funding. And so you have that yellow area in between the lines of sort of additional capacity that the task force recommends be spent on, on capital infrastructure. And you can see on the right, the surplus that is generated when implementing the strategies as recommended by the task force. And, and that's, that surplus is what allows you to spend those additional resources on capital funding.
Thank you, Sam. And so I think with, with that, we would love to just give an opportunity for the task force to be able to share with you kind of their thoughts and, and ideas and perspectives on this whole process. So I'm going to turn it over to you all. Please jump in.
Hi, counsel and Scott. I enjoyed the, the service on the task force. First, I want to say that the consultants and the staff did a good job of detailing estimates and process for raising revenues to balance a perceived growing budget deficit. They presented revenue options available to the council without a vote of the people and as well as options available for getting approval at the ballot box. Is this coming?
Yeah, just bring it a little closer.
Okay. The task force reviewed all these options and are suggesting two priority revenue generating options. The utility tax, which can be raised from the current 0% to a legal maximum of 6% and would generate some $11 million a year. And the creation of the metropolitan park district could result by an approval vote in an additional $5 million per year in revenues and would be somewhat insulated from parks bearing the brunt of budget cost reduction programs being lower priority than police and fire. So right now, if, if you have to reduce the budget, everybody says, well, police and fire, you leave them alone. Next comes park district or parks. So this would insulate park funding from that possibility. You have to decide whether it's, the park board is independently elected or, or the city council acting as a park board. What the task force did not address was how the city got into this financial situation. After the first two decades of incorporation, saw the city with no bonded indebtedness while spending some $14 million a year in capital expenditures, building up large reserves and not using the 1% per year property tax increases for some 10 years. That is a task for the council to explore and understand. Another topic that the task force did not address, except in passing, was the suggestions made by Mr. Stickney, the only citizen who made public comments to the task force. Mr. Stickney proposes that the council investigate the possibility of closing the budgetary shortfall while providing an enhanced and vibrant town center, meeting affordable housing goals, providing a diversity of housing, including housing for multiple generations and generating large sums for infrastructure enhancement. What it boils down to is for the council to ask the city manager for a review of this concept and firm up the estimates. Mr. Stickney estimates that the enhanced town center would generate some $23 million per year from property tax, sales tax and REIT and one-time revenues of perhaps $170 million from impact fees, construction, sales tax, et cetera. With the additional service costs to the city of maybe $5 million per year, that still generates sufficient revenue to balance the budgets once again. So after review and analysis, the city should seek feedback from the community. Do they want additional taxes of some $800 per year per household? Or do they want a more vibrant and encompassing town center, which makes Sammamish a livable place for Sammamish residents over their lifetimes and for all future generations living in Sammamish? The decisions on raising taxes need not happen immediately. There is time to explore alternatives. It was my pleasure to join the other members of the task force in this venture into the nuances of city finance. Thank you.
I'm not going to be as eloquent as Don is. I don't have a prepared statement. I think one of the biggest challenges the task force faced and, and the council does too, as we look at additional revenues in the future, is explaining the property tax system we have in this state. As you've said here just recently, the city can only raise it by 1%. But when someone looks at their property tax statement, it goes up by more than 1%, there's a disconnect. I remember speaking with Michael at length, trying to explain to him the assessor's difficulty in managing that, those 1% caps. And just as a personal example, because I live in an older house, when things were really booming about 10 years ago, the structure of my house was valued at zero because there was so much construction activity going on around and the assessor had to spread that, that cost. So it's a really challenging piece of information that most people really don't understand the complexity and how it works. And then it gets worse because you layer on top, new development, redevelopment can be added on top of the 1%. So I think for the council, as you go forward and trying to explain this, in fact, one of our major bullet points in here is a very robust communication strategy so that people understand where we are, where we're going, what the plan is and how it works. Thank you.
I'll give it a go. I don't know if I'm going to be even as eloquent as John, but we'll, we'll go for it. Thanks for allowing us to do this. It's been an honor and I'm honored to and a privilege to serve with all these fine citizens. It was a great experience. I guess what I want to share a little bit is when we got to the process that Baker Tilly was talking about, Sam specifically, you know, we all had homeworks. I wanted to share a little bit about how I came to what I proposed and then what wasn't included, because I think that's relevant to this discussion. So I literally stuck really close to the charter and it was to look at strategically what to do. And even my friends and family said, oh, so you're going to go through every line item on the city budget? And I said, no, I don't think we're going to do that or adjudicate every decision made. So it was fairly strategic and we were given, you know, 17 major strategies to consider and we looked at all those, Owen even brought up, are there other things that people want to bring up? So there was opportunity for anyone to bring up other things as well as the community did that too. But in doing so, my thought process was as follows. I thought, okay, I am a citizen, so I'm pro, pro-citizen. I agree with the city's values and vision, so I stuck to that. I'm also pro-business. I don't think we should have a community that pushes away businesses and I didn't want to have anything to, that would push that away. As, as Sam was saying, impact changeability to me, if it's something that's impossible to do, gosh, it's unlikely that we would hoist it upon you and then have it be a problem for the council also. So some of that involved would, you know, what was the reaction for the community? And I thought, well, what would my friends and family say if this came upon them? Would they accept that? And so I was thinking about a balance of cuts and, and increases, trying to balance that out. I, I think the reality of life and, and even my business clients are facing always increasing expenses and always decreasing revenue. I have not yet met one that hasn't had that dilemma. And so we try and solve that problem. I looked at the problem as very, maybe too simplistic, I think. We were looking at, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, we had 13 million by 2028, another five and a half by 2032, I think. And so my engineering brain said, okay, well, let's solve that and then look at the reserve and that, that would be the strategy. So I picked out things that would get to that number and then I stopped. Reason why I thought that is I, I, I'm not sure if the community would be able to comprehend the 17 or even 28 or 73 different things that we're all doing, like the, that would have been, felt like city management by a thousand paper cuts, if you will. And I thought, well, how about things that are logical, make sense and that the vital few, just a few things that you could communicate effectively? So I was looking for some of these big things and I, believe me, I am not a fan of taxes. I, I, I also saw that if you, if we were to cut and trim the city budget, I'm not sure if you could cut and trim it enough to make the deficit. It just didn't seem like there was enough money there. So with that, eclipsing that threshold, those vital few items, also the fiscal capacity, because on the little red line that, that Sam had there or Steve that had said, this does not include all your capital spending either. So I thought, wow, okay, so we're going to do this and this fine place we live in will have zero capital improvement in this plan. I also thought to myself, how often are you going to assemble a fiscal sustainability task force every year, you know, every other year? And I thought, oh gosh, I don't know if you guys want to do this again, but I don't know if I would. I don't know. I mean, then in the best way. I don't know if you guys want to do this every year, maybe we will have a picnic and see each other. But I thought, why not make a permanent solution as best we can? I would think that's what I would expect of you, is have something of permanence rather than have it up for referendum or what do you call it, levy again and again. I, it was a big learning for me that those wear out and you have to redo them. And I thought, well, is there a way we can put something in place that will stand the test of time? So the few that were there, I, I had suggested a few and, and there was good discussion. There were some that were voted on and I also didn't think that if we just did it by popular vote, I think that's a bad way to govern, honestly. And let me put it this way, I, I said in the meeting that you have two wolves and a sheep deciding what to have for dinner. I, I just don't think that, that voting thing by, oh, this one got, you know, six out of 10 and then, and now we're there. I, I thought, there's got to be a strategy behind it. There's got to be a rationale behind it. There's got to be thinking behind it and what would that be? I think that would serve this community much better. I think also the contingencies as, as Baker Tilly explained is that you would invoke those or implement those if we failed on the other ones, not just as a whole set. Because I think the community would enjoy the fact that you're just not saying Because I think the community would enjoy the fact that you're just not saying, hey, let's collect every cent we can from everybody, every moment of every day. That would probably not be a sustainable strategy. So there were very few that had a rationale for why they're there. And then to comment on some of the things, because Don had brought this up before around the town center, I have to say, I'm not informed enough. And we didn't, as a group, have a lot of the information to go through all that for the town center evaluation. I didn't see that as part of our work, although it's part of your work. If, in fact, that does generate the $23 million, hallelujah, I say we scrap all this. And wouldn't it be great if, here's my challenge to you, if we collect all this and it works, please cut our taxes accordingly? Because if, the other comment we had earlier, if you spend every cent you get, I don't, you know, I don't think anyone is a fan of that. However, if it turns out that it's managed well, as we say, I think you'll do the right thing. And I'm sure I've gone over my three minutes. I love that. But I do want to say thank you for the opportunity, and thanks for everybody here. It has just been a joy to be with all of you. Thank you.
I also wanted to thank the city, too, for having an open and transparent process by which, you know, citizens can participate. And I found it a fascinating exercise, just to learn about the city finances and just some of these different strategies, and also how things are funded in the state of Washington. Just learning that was fascinating. And then also, learning from the different experiences of my committee members, that was wonderful. Just a couple of things I wanted to add on from what Michael said is that I approached it from living in Sammamish. What are the things that are important to people? And it's parks, it's safety, it's roads, it's things like that. So if I was trying to fund those things, how would I want to do it? And I'd want to do it in a more permanent way, where, as Michael said, you don't have to go out to levy to try to get funding all the time. And so, you know, that's how we came up with the park strategy. And we all agreed we would help participate, you know, if that was a strategy you adopted. But, I mean, that's important to people in Sammamish, and that was something they could understand. And so the other thing, too, is practicality of adopting these different strategies. There were 17 of them. There were so many different nuances to it. But what struck me is there's a lot of moving pieces that have to go into getting all these things funded or on the ballot, and what was going to be the easiest and most sustainable for the city. Because I think a number of us have all lived here for a very long time. It's a place where people are very proud to live. And that's the communication strategy. We talked about how, you know, how these strategies will be brought out to the community. And then also, you know, budgeting is an art. I said this in the meeting. And it's, you know, these are ideas that can be used, and perhaps you don't have to use them, but at least we've evaluated them and we've got models behind them. And so, I just wanted to share a little bit of the thinking that I put into it. Thank you.
I found it really a valuable process for me, too. And what I found most interesting was the information they presented on how we compare to other cities. You know, how much do we spend per capita versus Kirkland, Mercer Island? How much do we tax? What taxes do we use compared to other cities? And I felt proud of what a good job we've been doing. But at the same time, I felt, gosh, we're a little tight-fisted. You know, compared to what other cities spend per capita, we're very low. And so I thought, well, you know, we enjoy a wonderful life here. Perhaps we should pay a little bit more for it and continue the good services that we have. Initially, I was very worried about the municipal parks district. And then, because we know that parks are so important to our citizens. But then I got convinced that really by creating this separate entity, we are protecting parks. And we are always told by our citizens how much they love parks. Now's their chance to pass a metropolitan parks district. And I have, all these are, people are volunteering to help me with the campaign for metropolitan parks district, so I'm hoping that that will be a success. And I think it's a good idea now.
I know I spoke a lot during the committee, so I can't let this opportunity go away either. I want to speak a little bit to the process, and I echo what a pleasure it was to get to know all of you a little bit. Some of you I kind of knew, but this was a great opportunity to work together. I originally approached this thinking, we need to make sure the public gets a chance to vote on whatever we do, thinking that that was the best way to be inclusive and to include the community. And as we worked through all the potential possibilities for ways we could raise the money we're going to need, it became obvious that that's really punting the city council's responsibility and the city's responsibility to create its own sustainability model. And so it was a learning experience, really, that you came in with certain assumptions about how things would work. And as we discussed the options, you know, minds were changed. And I think in the end, what's in this recommendation is that are the things we actually had consensus on. There are lots of other things in there that people advocated for, but they didn't have consensus from everybody. And so I just point that out. One of the eye-openers for me, and I know you all probably already know how I feel about the town center, but the reality is that the amount of funds that will be raised from the town center is really insignificant compared to the other funding sources that we discussed in the measures we were looking at. And the nice thing about this is it's not like something you put on a shelf, adopt, and then leave. It's even the utility tax recommendation doesn't happen all at once. And if we're reevaluating as we go on, and we see that we're able to get to a sustainability level without adopting a whole 6% on everything, then we can stop. The council can look at it and say, no, we don't need to go further with that. And on the flip side, if the reality of how development takes place in the city generates the multi-millions of revenue from a town center, or whatever other development takes place, that will be considered as well. So I hope this is a living, breathing document. We worked, we walked down the path, we get started on it, we can't ignore it, and then are flexible enough to adjust as we learn more, as the reality unfolds in front of us.
Yes. Didn't have anything prepared, but I made some small notes here. Gratitude for being able to share and mainly learn. Want to articulate an acronym that has four S's in it. Sammamish Staff Sustainability Services. And when I talk about staff, looking at, they need, or should be available, competent, flexible, trained, and trainable. Task that staff confront daily and annually, and all the time in between, really, you find out, you complete one task and you move on to another task. We're not calling them problems. It's a task. And ended up here with, in the journey and/or the destination. What is important here? And that's something to consider. In improvising, which is part of this, you don't say but and stop the program, you say and, and give opinions. Okay, thank you.
Well, as I look around this room, I see that I'm the last speaker here. So thank you everyone for sharing your thoughts and experiences to this whole task force and this whole process. Certainly was, it's a consensus. It's a joy to work with you in something that I thought would be more arduous. So I was happy that we came through this process and offered some solution to the council. So just wanted to reiterate what many of you have said. This was a less tasking task force process. So I appreciate all of your comments, and it was a joy working with all of you. Thank you.
So I know that this was just an informational item tonight, but I know you have your task force members here, and so if there's any other questions or thoughts. And Deputy Mayor, let me just turn it back to you and, again, give our gratitude for the opportunity to serve you in this project.
Thank you. I'll open up two questions from the council. Councilmember Howe.
I'm going to start with an apology to all of you and to city manager. I was not convinced that this would work. I didn't know that we'd be able to pull off having people come together that didn't have a background in economic development in municipalities. And I felt like there weren't enough, there wasn't enough time to really grasp and understand the complexities of the issues. I was completely wrong. I was mesmerized by your meetings. They were spectacular. I think the rioter's strike might have helped you to a certain extent, because I wanted to tune in to see what you guys were doing. But I have to say, I was, I had aha moments, probably every 10 minutes, with somebody seeing something new or in a new way that I had not anticipated or foreseen, that changed people's minds in the room. That is extraordinary. That does not happen. I was very impressed and got schooled, to be honest with you. So what I love about this is it's the best part of wisdom of crowds. The solutions you guys were proposing are understandable, relatable, logical, building blocks that meld into each other. They aren't a piece here and a piece here. There's componentry here that actually makes sense and that you can explain. Because to your point, you're correct. It's extremely difficult to come up with a positive solution and then explain it in a way that people want to absorb it and understand it. Because we're all too busy to really devote the time and attention that we must to things like this. But I believe that I shouldn't sell our residents short either, like I made the mistake with you guys. They will understand this. It is understandable. This flexible thought, this ability to expand and think about, well, what if we did it this way or did it that way? You've given us the tools that I think we need as a council to really develop something sustainable as we go forward. And I appreciate the effort that you folks have put into this more than you know. The other piece of this, I know that you guys want to leave this room and go have a glass of champagne and not ever come back to this again. However, I mean, to Debbie's point about a living, breathing document, I mean, it is going to be really helpful if you could check in with this piece on a prescribed basis, to see, are we holding true to this? Are we, did we miss something? Is there something else that you've learned as you've just been out in the public and helping, you know, to promote some of these ideas forward? There's always unintended consequences with this stuff. Always. I want to make sure that, like, if we do the municipal park thing, that we don't have a fungible asset that somehow gets siphoned off in an unanticipated way because a different council comes in, you know, or something like that. So I'm looking for guardrails and protections and things like that. And I know you haven't thought about those either. So maybe that's the duty of another group that gets pulled together. For now, I just want to commend you in your service. Thank you.
Mayor Clark.
Hello. Sorry I can't be there. I just wanted to say thank you to you all. I would love to shake your hand, but that would be disgusting at this point. But I really appreciate your time and effort and that you whittled it down to something actionable and pretty, and like Karen said, very packaged nicely so we can share out. I know we have a lot of decisions to make, but thank you, and thank you for your words. And what a cool group. So thank you again.
Councilmember Indipure.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to echo what my other fellow council members have said. This is a very esteemed panel. I know many of you have sat on this side of the dais, so you bring in that experience and your lived experiences. Many of you have served or continue to serve on commissions for the city. So first of all, I do want to acknowledge and really bow down to your public service and, you know, just your desire to serve your city. So thank you. If we may have a round of applause. I think to the point of, you know, I know it's a lot of work. And Mr. Boyer, to your point, you know, do we just stop here? Do we do it yearly thing? I think I would like to see us inspect and adapt. You know, that's a term that you hear probably in many of your workspaces. I think that is what we need to do here. I think somebody brought up communication as something that we need to be really strong on. And I would love to see, you know, us not only sort of take those recordings and make them public, I think it's already on the website, but maybe we can, you know, splice into bite sizes and share it with our residents. But then also, you know, can we get this as part of, like, the local curriculum for our schools? I think this is something we live and breathe and we don't understand a lot of. So I would love to see that maybe as an after-school, you know, class, or even maybe talking to some teachers. I know we have a connection at the U-Dub with the School of Public Policy, I think. Yeah?
That's the Evan School, yeah.
The Evan School, yeah. And then, you know, it would be a great thing for them to maybe come up with a curriculum that we can, you know, use in our schools as well. But again, to echo, I think initially, you know, even when I had looked at the composition of the task force, it was, I was trying to imagine how this group would come to a consensus. But just seeing some very solid proposals, which, you know, which we can take forward, which are very sincere, and actually just not our easy solutions, just, you know, taking the easy path. So I really, really appreciate everything that has gone into this. And yeah, look forward to implementing many of these strategies. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, panel, so much. I watched all your meetings, and I was educated along with you on so many issues, so thank you for all your work. I had just one question, and as a panel, I'd love to hear what you think. It was brought up. Do you feel like you had enough time to mull over all the issues, take in all of the information, and give the recommendations that you would like? Did you feel like you were given the time? Would you have wished to have had? And of course, nobody wishes to go to one more meeting. But would you have liked another meeting or two? Would you have liked another month or two? Would you have liked another six months or two for to mull over this information? Or do you feel like the four meetings, I think it was, that you had was sufficient to take in all the information and give your best recommendation?
You know, we had the option to have another meeting, and we decided we were done. We had enough. Right? Right?
Not in a bad way. That was a good way.
Actually, in terms of budget variance, we were underplanned by 20%.
There you go. I would say for our task, I think it was appropriate. In fact, we didn't run out the clock in every meeting. We didn't, Scott didn't keep us here until 10:30, 11, like he keeps you guys here. It's probably not Scott, right? But, you know, if the task was, you know, to evaluate other things more deeply, then I probably would have needed more time to go through reams of financials. But that, I don't think that was our assignment. So for what we were assigned to do, what the charter said, I thought it was really appropriate.
Great. Thank you for that.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, please.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Sure.
I just think a lot of that praise needs to go to our consultants, because they set up a process that really allowed us to focus on what we needed to get done and keep moving.
And that tool was really a lot of fun with the dials, you know. And that tool was really a lot of fun with the dials, you know.
Fabulous. And my last comment was that I love that you put in there a communications plan. I think that's really, really, really important. And I look forward to us kind of working on that and try to get this information out to the public. I think I'm really grateful to see that and to keep that top of mind because when you're looking at such a subject, all you're thinking about are numbers, numbers, numbers. But when you realize that there's a huge communication piece to that, so thank you for that. That was a really great point to raise and much appreciated. And thank you so much for being willing to serve on the task force. It was really wonderful to see so many people get involved and our city thanks you. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, again, thank you. And I really appreciate this discussion as well to really hear your, kind of your thought processes behind it, not just what was discussed at the meetings. Because as you've all said, this is the beginning, not the end, right? So I really appreciate understanding sort of the different perspectives and how you guys thought about it. I definitely think communication is always going to be key because it isn't our money, right? It's the citizens' money that we're talking about, how we're going to spend it. And I hope, I'm going to kind of make an ask, I know you guys have already served, but as we go through this process and we have to consider what actions we really will take, I hope that you will all come and give public comment as we go through this process. Because I do think you did a good job of focusing on what was given to you in front of you. I think there are some other things we still need to consider as a council. And so to continue to get that input and that perspective, that's why I think it's great that we, we do things like this to get those perspectives because we have a lot of people in the community and we need to hear all of those different perspectives so that we can make the best possible decision we can. So I really appreciate that. And I know Scott has some more heavy, Scott and the rest of staff have some more heavy lifting to do as they look, you know, what we asked Scott to do last year when we passed the budget of looking at, are there areas where we can cut? And I appreciate, Michael, you talking about the fact that we may be able to make some cuts and we should always look to that, but we probably aren't going to cut our way back to where we want to be. But, but we still should do it every year, right? I mean, that is, again, an obligation. We have to do some, appreciate all of that. But we also do have a period of very high inflation over the last year and that's probably not going to go away. And so we shouldn't expect staff to squeeze, you know, water from a rock type of thing either. And I think we have to be mindful of where we can find enough money that makes it worth the effort to go find the money. I know in my job, we've often been given tasks to go cut budgets and we've determined that we spent more time figuring out how to cut the budget than money saved. And I think that we have to be very practical about all of that. So I really do appreciate that. I think, I know Deputy Mayor Lamb and I have talked about, I think there are some strategies that you guys weren't presented with that we might be able to consider going forward as well. So there might be some other options that might be more or less regressive if we're going to have to look at other ways to raise revenue. And I do think it's important that we do more research on the economic development. We're only just now creating our economic development model or element in the comp plan for the first time. And I think it's important that we look at those and revise those. The data that was used for this task is a bit old, right? It's from, I think the data is actually from 2016 and it was not adjusted even for just time value of money and inflation. So I think all of those things are elements we need to look at before we consider, you know, implementing new taxes on anybody. But thank you so much and please do, even if you just write it in, you don't have to come to the meetings and sit through them anymore, but please continue to share your perspectives because you do now have a more in-depth and unique perspective than other people do. So thanks.
Councilmember Trinh.
Yes, thank you. And please thank your loved ones, spouses and your families for the sacrifices that they made. Because I know that the time that you spent helping the city, there were sacrifices made and we appreciate those. So thank you.
So I will close it out. I just wanted to introduce a different perspective on this. I watched all the meetings and, well, first off, I want to thank everybody for serving on this task force. I realize it was a huge time commitment. I had a hard time like letting this opportunity pass without seeing this. We often hear, and it is true, that Sammamish has the highest median income of any city in the country and that's $195,000. And when we hear that, we are under the assumption that everybody here is well off and that is not the case. So, you know, in prepping for this meeting, I took a look at the U.S. Census data for 2022. There are 22,146 households in Sammamish and the lowest 20% of our households, which is 4,429 households, they make an average of $46,000. The lowest 40% of our households, that is 88,858 households, make an average of $95,000. So, you know, to put that into perspective, to have taxes, many of which the strategies that we are considering, they are all regressive. And the biggest burden will be on these 8,800 households. And with our housing targets of an additional 2,100, all of those are in the affordable areas. We're adding another, you know, 2,000 homes. So you're looking at 10,000 households out of 22,000 households that will be making an average of $95,000. And to me, you know, the taxes that we're considering, and I understand that we need to do them, but at the same time, they are regressive and I am concerned about the burden that we are placing on them. You know, the fiscal, solving the fiscal gap is important and it is a culture and it is a council goal. But within the framework of our goals, DEIB is also a council goal and that is equity. And so it is important that all our policies that we create is equitable for all our residents. So I want, like, that is something that we should really keep in mind. And so as we move forward and considering some of the strategies that the task force is recommending and some of the strategies that we as council are going to come up, we are, as council, going to focus on making the taxes equitable as much as we possibly can. But I do want to thank everybody for their service and I was very impressed in all the meetings I watched. So thank you very much.
Would you like to close out, Scott, on this?
If that's okay, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, thank you. So again, I really do want to thank the task force and I want to thank our consultants from Baker Tilly. Their ability to consolidate a lot of information and put it in readable and digestible format was kind of unparalleled and we really appreciate it. And it's given us a roadmap for our communication plan to the discussion here at the dais about how we move forward with whatever that is that we are able to, excuse me, do a good job of communicating. I think we're going to get property tax pie chart Tyvek suits for council to wear around the community when they go out to help with that. So, but it is, it was a sizable task and I know that while not provided all of the information, I think the, the information that the task force did look at was really the crux of what the issue is. And I think to where Steve and the team started, it is about the structural imbalance and about making sure that we reflect the community values. I think I shared with the task force that the budget is a reflection of community values and we want to make sure that as we move forward, we are making sure to reflect those community values. And I think from that perspective, I think the task force did an amazing job of reflecting their individual communities, bringing them to the table and having a robust discussion. I thought, for me, that was the piece that was the most compelling out of everything is everyone brought their unique perspectives and their approaches and shared them and they were all different. I think, I think everyone would agree. And it was, it was a privilege for me to sit at the table with all of you and be able to sit back and let go of the reins, if you will, and say, here it all is, give us your opinion. And I think that's, that's a piece that was powerful and I really do want to say that this group was fairly amazing. And I don't know how we lucked out, but I want to thank you again, all of you, for being willing to step forward on, if you were to look on the scale of, if I was going to volunteer for the city, what would be the top 10 choices? I don't think this falls into any one of those. So, so I am really grateful for all of you for being willing to step forward and be part of this. And I think it will be very helpful as we continue on with our deliberations going into the mid-biennial budget review and then when we come back after that point to reset, reset the model and look at the recommendations and how we move forward. So thank you again. Before you all leave, I do want to make sure we get a picture of the team because I think this is really important as well. I think we need to celebrate those that come and volunteer for our city and so we want to make sure and get a picture of you. Hopefully it's okay with you that we maybe put that in our newsletter moving forward to say thank you. So again, thank you so much and appreciate the council for allowing me the opportunity to pull this team together and do their work. Yeah, we will go ahead, Deputy Mayor, if it's okay, you go ahead and announce our next piece and then we'll, on the way there, we will stop and do a picture.
All right, great. So after this, we'll be heading into executive session. Land acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101B, pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.31101I and pending litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I. Council may take action. And how much time do you anticipate, Carrie?
Well, to allow for the, to allow for the photo, after that, I think we will go into exec session starting at approximately 8:00 PM and returning at 9:00 PM.
Okay, we'll return at 9:00 PM. Welcome back, everybody. I believe we have a motion. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement on behalf of the city in substantially the form recommended by the city attorney's office and the city's real estate consultant to acquire King County parcel number 0624069115, which is approximately 1.67 acres of vacant land located on 1760 East Lake Sammamish Parkway southeast, Sammamish, Washington, for the sum of eight, for the sum of $880,000 and zero cents.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. I believe the Parks team will be filling us in with more information on that motion.
Thank you, council. For the record, my name is Kevin Teague. I'm the deputy director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. This is a 1.6 acre property. It is adjoining a piece of property called the Parker Property that the city purchased in 2021. And the hope and intent with this purchase would be for a continuation of a passive park in this area, trails and an eventual connection to the East Lake Sammamish Trail. Additionally, we have applied for a grant through the King County Conservation Futures Grant Program and we have, we have received notice that we are being recommended to receive that grant and the grant would pay 75% of the purchase cost.
Thank you, Kevin. We have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Did Mayor Clark enter in the vote?
Excuse me? Sorry.
I was a yea, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I couldn't click fast enough.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Anjali. Moving on to the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. Next up is the proclamations and we have councilmember O'Farrell who will be reading the proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated and observed nationwide by celebrating the histories, cultures and contributions of people whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And whereas the observance started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was eventually expanded in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending October 15. And acknowledging September 15 as the anniversary of independence of Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras and Nicaragua. And whereas Latinos are individuals who are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages and Hispanics are individuals who speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos are Washington's largest ethnic minority in 13.7% of the state's population, more than 1 million residents, and in Sammamish are 3.2% of our population. And as whereas Hispanics and Latinos enrich Washington communities with cultural, educational and political influences that can be seen and appreciated in all aspects of our life, from skilled workers, artists, professionals, owners of vibrant businesses and leaders. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we reaffirm that diversity is one of our country's greatest strengths and reminds us that the American identity is a fabric of diverse traditions and stories woven together. For future resolution, Mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of Sammamish City Council, to hereby proclaim and urge residents to observe this month by increasing their awareness of the valuable ways Hispanics and Latinos have contributed to our state and city's prosperity.
Thank you. Councilmember Indy Perry will be reading a proclamation for National Pollution Prevention Week.
Thank you. So whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency acknowledges National Pollution Prevention Week in honor of the United States Congress passing the Pollution Prevention Act in 1990. And whereas the Pollution Prevention Act encourages pollution prevention by reducing or eliminating waste at the source, by modifying production processes, promoting the use of non-toxic or less toxic substances, implementing conservation techniques and reusing materials rather than putting them into waste stream. And whereas the city council's environmental goal is to protect the natural environment through integrated national, natural resource management. And whereas King County is a leader in implementing programs that reduce and prevent pollution generated by businesses, residents and municipal operations by partnering with the community to protect our environment. And whereas pollution prevention is not just, not the responsibility of businesses and government agencies, residents are encouraged to help solve environmental problems by reducing pollution at the source before it is created. And whereas resources and services are provided by a diverse workforce with a variety of backgrounds and experience levels that share a common goal of protecting public health and the environment by reducing or eliminating sources of pollution before they enter our environment, including our wetlands, streams and lakes, while preventing the need for costly controls and cleanup processes. And now therefore, our mayor Kayla Clark, on behalf of the city council, proclaims the week of September Clark, on behalf of the city council, proclaims the week of September 18 through the 22nd, 2023, as National Pollution Prevention Week.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we will have Audrey and team here for the Republic Services Contract Extension Amendment.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good evening, Mayor. Deputy Mayor and council. For the record, I'm Audrey Sarsky, Public Works Director. The city currently contracts with Republic Services of Bellevue to provide solid waste collection services for the city. Our current contract is citywide, with the exception of a few neighborhoods in the city, including Kohani, and that's just due to the timing of annexations. So, we are here this evening as previewing your agenda packet to discuss an opportunity to amend our existing contract with Republic for the purpose of extending that contract for an additional three years through the end of 2028, and including Kohani in that existing, in our existing citywide solid waste collection contract. For reference, the proposed contract amendment has been included in the agenda bill. It's Exhibit 1, which I believe is on page 33 of your agenda packet. We have a presentation prepared for you this evening discussing the proposed amendment, as well as our communication plan. And at the end of the presentation, we do have a recommended motion, should you decide to move forward with the contract amendment. Excuse me. Presenting, we have a whole team for you this evening. So presenting from city staff, and we have Jen Rubenelli, our Public Works Management Analyst, Ryan Redrick, our Communications Manager, Jeanette Jurgensen, the city's Solid Waste Consultant Support, with Ben There Consulting, and Wendy Wyker with Republic Services. Jeanette, whenever you are ready, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council. So the purpose of this presentation is to receive direction from the council on the proposed contract amendment with Republic Services to extend the contract for an additional three years and incorporate Kohani into the regular city contract. So a little background, I know Audrey had just given you some, but the city has some managed contracts with Republic Services for garbage recycling and compostables collection for most of the city, with the exception of a few neighborhoods, and Kohani is one of those, due to the timing of their annexation. So they are regulated under the W U T C. And so they have different services and rates than the rest of the city. And areas that have been incorporated and annexed into cities that are under the U T C control generally have seven to 10 years before they're converted to a city contract. It is not an automatic thing. So they are in that waiting period. So the details of this amendment are to extend the contract for three years through December 2028. Starting in 2024, Kohani would shift to this current city contract, so they would have the same rates and services as the rest of the residents and businesses. This will include an increase in rates in 2024, and then a set annual increase thereafter, which I'll talk about on the next slide. And currently, under the contract, trucks cannot be more than 10 years old. Because we're extending the contract past 10 years, the recommendation would be to relax the age of the trucks. But I do want to clarify that they still have to be properly maintained, continue with the same safety, and they would still continue with the zero emissions renewable natural gas. So it's just the age of the trucks. As I mentioned in the rate restructure presentation a couple months ago, currently, your contract rates adjust, the service component, service component adjusts by CPI, and the disposal component will adjust by the King County tipping fee and fixed annual charge. So in this amendment, the city contract rates on the service portion would increase 15% overall in the first year, and after that would be a set 5% rather than the variable CPI that's in the current contract. The disposal portion of the rates would continue to adjust as they had before, due to the King County tipping fee and fixed annual charge changes. So this is a chart of the expected rate changes. I want to give a couple caveats before we jump into this. First is, the numbers are not finalized yet. We're still waiting for the King County disposal fees to be finalized. So these are estimates. Second is, when you try to compare a city contract with embedded services in the U T C, it's a little difficult because U T C is à la carte. So we've tried to compare the closest service level, which would be the 32-gallon cart with recycling and yardway service. And approximately a third of Kohani does not subscribe to yard waste service. So we've added a line for what the rate increase might look like for residents without that service. So in the first one, city residents with the most common service level, the 30 to 35-gallon cart, with the embedded recycling and yard waste, are paying a little over $40 a month. This will be going up, we expect about $6.75 under this amendment. And this is before taxes and fees. So this is the rate that they will see on their bill. Kohani residents with the most similar service would expect an increase of a little less than a dollar. But residents without the yard waste service would probably see the most significant increase of close to $17.54. So as I mentioned, this would bring Kohani residents up to the same service level as the rest of the city. And so a couple highlights that I wanted to point out. One is, all Kohani residents would be receiving the embedded weekly compostable service collection. So instead of that being a subscription, everybody would receive it. The hauler would provide carts for garbage. Currently, residents can use cans or carts, but now the rolling carts with the wheels and handle will be provided to everyone for garbage. Residents can participate in your expanded curbside recycling collection for batteries and small appliances at no additional charge. One of the great things is if you're missed and you call in, instead of under the U T C where you have to wait a whole week for pickup, you now get collection on the next business day. And finally, if two weeks of service are missed due to inclement weather, the residents can now participate in the garbage drop-off, as well as receiving a credit on their bill that they weren't eligible for before. So some benefits to the city. I wanted to point out that there is one tiny section of the city that remains under waste management through the end of 20, or the beginning of 2026. So when I say entire city, I'm excluding that little tiny pocket. So excluding that, the entire city would be under one solid waste contract. So if residents call into the city, or call into Republic Services, they're all going to get the same information. We would have consistent rates and services across the entire city, not have to look at my address and say, oh, you were eligible for this or that. It would be consistent. Everybody would have the same. The increase in services, especially the organic services, can really help the city meet their sustainability goals, as well as the mandates put by the state and the goals of the county. By extending the contract, the procurement process would be delayed about two and a half to three years. I'm going to go into a slide on what that looks like. But we expect that some of the major contract price drivers may decrease in this period of time by waiting. We would have rates that would stair-step, so that's set 5% on the service component. So we would expect to decrease the large bump when we do go out for a next procurement process. And finally, the way technology is advancing between now and the next procurement, hopefully, there's going to be some more advances that the city can take advantage of by delaying that procurement process a few more years. So a little more on the procurement process. If this contract is not extended, we will immediately have to start participating in the competitive procurement process for a new solid waste contract, which is usually about a year long. What we're seeing for other cities that have gone through this process is that they're seeing rate increases of 25 to 55% over their current rates. And one of the reasons is when contract rates were set 10 years ago, there was a really competitive environment, and the inflators that we have just have not kept up. We have uncertainty in the recycling markets, there's supply chain issues, there's staffing issues. So we're seeing some really high contracts. Each contract is different, so I can't predict exactly what yours would be. But I can say of the four that we've recently done, they're all within this 25 to 55% range. And then I would like to turn it over to Ryan to talk about the city's communication plan.
Thanks, Jeanette. Deputy Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to share with you what our plan is for outreach and communications with this item. It fits well under the city's communications priorities for a medium to high-level priority item. That would include a write-up in what we're planning on our winter newsletter, a social media posting campaign, the addition of some comprehensive facts, frequently asked questions to the website, and frequent web updates, both on, on news and events. It is one of those items that checks the boxes of Public Works. It's a change, and it's something that we want to communicate as transparently as we possibly can while we go through this process. So I just wanted to briefly touch on some of those items that we're going to be using, working in conjunction with our consultant, working in conjunction with potential contractors to accomplish this communication in the most transparent way that we can for our residents. And I'll, of course, be happy to answer any questions about that process and, and plan, should you have them. Thanks, Jeanette.
And with that, Wendy Wyker here, Republic Services. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just wanted to touch on this being a highest priority communication item for Republic, should you choose to move forward. We know this is a big deal for certainly the Kohani residents, who are going to be incorporated into the Sammamish service levels. So our commitment to communication will be endless, repetitive, and thorough from the very beginning of this decision through the change on January 1, and then through the first quarter, and then ongoing like we typically do with our communication. So first, we're going to do a mailer to the current city contract customers, let them know about the rate changes, the collection guidelines, the no-cost recycling programs, disposal options for bulky items and hazardous waste, and of course, contact information with the website and additional resources that we have there. We're going to do a mailer to Kohani customers that has the same information as current city contract customers, embedded residential compostable service, weekly recycling and compostable collection, the conversion from personal cans to carts, and then recovery collection for missed pickups. So a lot of new information for Kohani customers. So we're going to be ready for that with the communications. Our customer service staff at our CRCs will be ready and standing by with all this information, as they typically do with the internal systems we have. We're already talking about an FAQ with Ryan, so that that list of talking points and consistent messages can be on the website, through the city communication channels, through our communication channels, through all these mailers, through any inquiries we get from customers anywhere in Sammamish. Clarity, consistency, repeat, and certainly addressing any and all concerns and questions and explanations is where our focus will be. And the website will be one of our key places to do that. So with the website updates, we plan to have all the rate information there, the clarification that Kohani is certainly under the city contract services and expectations, PDFs of all the mailers that we send out will be there, all the recycling tips, promotion of no-cost recycling programs, the organics work that we're doing together, all of the sustainability programs that we have available for students and kids. The website is really kind of the key for where we do all of that communication and link back to the city resources. Should residents look at the city first, or look at our website first, we're going to have some cross-referencing there with consistent information and messages. So with that, we're hoping it'll be a seamless transition. We know there might be hiccups along the way, and we'll be ready to take those one at a time. And you have my personal commitment that I will be available with my team to be anywhere, anytime, in Sammamish, to talk to residents in person or virtually. And again, to address you guys going forward about how the transition works. So appreciate your time and look forward to your discussion.
Thank you, Ryan and Wendy. So the staff recommends that city council approve the proposed contract amendment with Republic Services to extend the contract for an additional three years and incorporate, incorporate Kohani into the regular city contract. So I will leave this up for a moment. And are there any questions for any of us?
Councilmember Howe?
This is a question, I think, for our city manager. I was just curious if we've engaged in conversations with the manager of the HOA in Kohani about this.
Not at this time, councilmember.
Okay. Because I was just wondering how much of a surprise this is going to be. It is. Okay. So in your experience, Wendy, if I could just ask, when, when we've, when your company has taken on new service areas, for example, what, what does the call volume look like? And do you get it, or does the city get it?
You know, councilmember Howe, that, that really depends. So with the communication plan that we have, and that Ryan and I are working on together, we expect by being proactive in communications, well before the transition starts in January, we can prepare Kohani residents for the more dramatic change, certainly when we drop off the cart. So we've already been talking about this since, since your team, and we have been talking about this for several weeks, almost months now. So we expect the communication plan that we have will work. We have, based on previous experience with transitions from other contracts in other cities and incorporations, that, that being clear, being consistent, and being frequent certainly helps reduce any call volumes. But one of the measures I want to have is kind of look at call volumes before the change, see how call volumes change as we're communicating. And then, once service starts, sort of collect some data along the way to see how well we did. So I'm already thinking about data and metrics, and thinking about where and how those pockets might be. And should you guys choose to move forward tonight, you can bet one of the first calls, I think Ryan and I will make, is to that HOA president.
Thank you for that. And would, would we also be able to get something like, I noticed that we do have the ability to get ad hoc, ad hoc reports. So could we get an ad hoc report then on just that transition, and just so that we have a way to evaluate how that transition might occur?
You can have as much data and information anytime that you would like. So yes, happy to pull that together, and happy to get you guys the communication plan once Ryan and I pull it together in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I just want to be able to kind of summarize for those, if anyone is still following along at home. If we didn't do this, like for the non-Kohani parts of our city, we would enter into this negotiation process, and most likely, our rates would go up quite a bit, probably more than what this contract amendment would be. So just to kind of throw that out there, that this isn't like the rest of the city is necessarily subsidizing or anything. This is really to bring everybody up to the same level. And these increases were, were kind of, well, they're inevitable because of the, the, kind of the market, right, and what's happening in the market. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yes. It's hard to know exactly what that increase is going to be, but based on what we're seeing, it is inevitable to have a significant increase with a new contract.
And I'm assuming that you guys are going to make sure that when we go out with the communications, that we're clear about that, right, that this isn't, because we don't want to create any animosity there. We want everybody to be happy and holding hands while they're taking out their trash. And then, the only other thing I did want to, oh, I'm sorry, did you have something, Wendy?
I did. I just wanted to say that this is a huge benefit to Kohani residents to come under and combined with the city contract. So 15% compared to 25 or 50%. We can certainly make that rate case. But the best part of this is moving away from the U T C and letting that relationship expire really sets the city up for, going forward to have consistent service, consistent messaging. We've had, you know, a little bit of confusion over the years about why is this different instead of that. The residents don't care if they're U T C or otherwise, they just know that, that things have changed. So this is going to be a huge opportunity for So this is going to be a huge opportunity for effectiveness and efficiency in messaging, in service, in communications for everybody involved. So I'll just say, this is a really good thing for everybody. And while 15% sounds like a lot compared to inflation that's been at 10%, this is pretty consistent to sort of bring the rates together for one city service level.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for working on this, because I think it will be a benefit. And then, part of that is that we'll have a consistent increase of 5% per year. I think it was for the next three years instead of CPI. I'm assuming that we're anticipating CPI was going to be somewhere around 5% anyway, so people aren't going to feel like that's a bad thing. Would that be an accurate statement as well?
CPI was 9% a few years ago. So 5% is good for both of us. It's predictable for the city, it's predictable for our rates. And yeah, CPI has been fluctuating quite a bit. I think I heard my finance manager say it's 6.5% as of October for the last six months or something.
Excellent. That's great. And then, we should make sure we pass along, Wendy, we've got a public comment at the beginning of our meeting, which you probably weren't a part of, because it was a long, long time ago, around how we're adhering to the contract that we currently have around education. And I think there are parts that maybe the city needs to do, Mr. City Manager, of creating some content and getting it to Republic to get it out there as an educational effort to try to increase, right, recycling and composting. So I thought that was a rather helpful comment. It would be great to pass that along to everyone here.
So I will go listen to that public comment. And you're right, I was not listening earlier this evening. So we take education outreach seriously. The more we can do to be consistent across our residential and commercial and industrial customers around what's recyclable and what's not. We reach out to the multifamily customers as well. The cleaner we can make the stream, the more integrity the system has for the end markets where that material goes. And we all knew we can do more. So the more we can divert from the landfill, which is the re-plus pledge and the whole point of the rate restructure you just did a few months ago, we're all working towards that circular conor and zero waste. So I would love to follow up with that resident who had concerns. We provide quite a bit of content. Happy to take whatever content you guys have. And as we get inquiries or requests, happy to do whatever I can to help folks understand how this not-so-complicated and occasionally overcomplicated recycling system works.
Excellent. Well, that's great. And we even got like a really handy-dandy sheet, so we can share that as well. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Indy Perry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have some questions which were referred to when the presentation was going on. Can you help me understand the vehicle age that you guys talked about? What is that in reference to? And then, how is that going to change as we go ahead?
Okay, so I will take that one. So the previous contract had a vehicle age of less than 10 years. But because we're extending by three years and we amortize trucks and buy trucks based on 10-year contracts, we're going to do some finessing with our maintenance and truck fleet. We have 150 trucks anyway. So we're going to make sure that the trucks that are in Samamish are newer anyway. But if there was an audit, we might have an 11-year-old truck in your street. So waiving that 10-year requirement from the previous contract while we kind of try to piece this together till you drop your next RFP gives us the latitude to use maybe an 11- or 12-year-old truck. And as Jeanette mentioned earlier, just because it's an older truck doesn't mean it's a decrepit truck. We have an intense maintenance and operations base that takes care of those trucks, takes care of the fuel lines, inspects everything, not just for safety, but for all the environmental risks. Should there be a leak or a poke in the truck or hoses that might be weak, we have a system that looks at all of that, because we don't want any leaks or spills or trucks that might have mechanical compromises. If we have a truck that's suspect, we take it out of rotation, no matter what the age is. But we do have a life cycle that's typically 10 to 12 years. So since this would be sort of an added couple of years, we just need a little bit of that brace to make sure we can get this to the end of the contract before you drop the RFP, but have some latitude about that truck age. If it were a new contract, you'd absolutely have all-new trucks. We would have planned for that and had a year to order them. But because of sort of piecing this together to bring those two parts of your city together, that was the one piece our legal team wanted us to have a little latitude on, because we can't guarantee that every single truck rolling from '26 and '27 will be less than 10 years old. You might have an 11- or 12-year-old truck rolling through town.
So this is going to be only till we renegotiate the next contract in a couple of years?
Correct. And you'll probably see that in '26 or '27, because it does take a while to procure a new contract in the city of your size and the parameters that new contracts are looking at these years. And I know you guys are really committed to sustainability and climate action. And I'm really excited about electric vehicles. So I'm hoping that maybe by then you'll be ready to include that in a contract. We haven't had a city yet be ready to look at EVs as a potential real investment and partnership going forward. And I think you guys are poised to do that, given your size, scale, and location. So yes, delaying a few years gives EVs a chance to get there, and you'll get all-new trucks, whether it's renewable natural gas or EVs or something in between as you incorporate all that. But with new contracts come new trucks typically.
Great. And there was a reference to one area of Samamish which is still served by WM, Waste Management. Can you tell me where that area is? I wasn't, I don't know where it is.
I'll let Jeanette take that one.
And I can answer this question. So that neighborhood is the Mystic Lake neighborhood in the north part of Samamish. It's one single neighborhood.
Okay. Great. And I think, Ryan, when you were talking about communications, I know you mentioned a lot of things. I think just having a map and, you know, sort of outlining the areas, I think that is really helpful visually. So I would recommend that you add that. I think this is just a note, you know, in the memo it says, you know, under, we have this thing under fiscal impact, and it says there's no fiscal impact. And I kind of agree with that, yes. You know, you don't have a fiscal impact. There's nothing changing from monetary front or, you know, not costing us, but to what Councilmember Stewart said, this, if we don't do this right now, it will cost us a lot more. So in that sense, I think we're taking a proactive action by, you know, should we pass this motion? So I would say it does have a fiscal impact in that sense, that we're being conservative, we're being proactive with that. So in this contract, you know, and Wendy, this question is probably for you. You know, do we have any programs right now for, you know, we have a community, you know, who live in Section 8 housing, or we, there might be some seniors residents who might not be able to afford this, you know, rate increase. Do we have any services for that? I recall you saying a long time back that there were. So just was wondering if that is something that you can talk about?
We don't have that in the contract currently, I don't think. But if we chose to add that and the city wanted to help us identify which customers those were based on the water utilities where you're also helping those customers, that's kind of how we do that in other cities. So we don't know how to identify those residents. We don't have the capacity or authority to validate that. So we work with cities to identify those residents and then figure out what the rate relief might be or which portion might be rate relief. Your rates, you'll recall, are service portion that we have and the disposal portion that King County has. So how and where and in what circumstances we want to set that program up would require a little more work. But we have several cities looking at that. So I would be happy to work with Jen going forward to see how that might work, given your other utilities, given your finance manager's blessing and your city manager and city attorneys, of course. So there's a lot of work that goes into that.
Does Republic Services have any sort of payment plans right now? If your customers cannot, you know, take that increase?
We have payment plans, yeah. But we don't have refunds or rebates necessarily. So we can help level payments across to help folks manage payments. But we don't provide relief or forgiveness of service.
Got it, got it. And then again, just to sort of circle back to the public comment that we had earlier, I think, I'm hoping like, you know, the promotion and education section of the contract remains the same. And I think there are some things that I think, you know, the city would love, or the council would love to get like reports on. I think it's already required in here, but we don't see that periodically. So that would be great. And I think, Wendy, at the start, you said, you know, you're more than happy to answer folks' questions. I think my ask here would be, is there something that Republic can do proactively to say, hey, we would love to come to your HOA or we would love to come to your apartment complex, meet the manager? You know, if there is something that can be done proactively, I think that would be really beneficial to our residents.
So we do do a lot of proactive outreach, especially with HOAs and multifamily properties. So it's part of our regular outreach is to call folks and right-size service. And also, you know, if we see contamination, we reach out to homeowners, businesses, to try to help them recycle better already. So we are proactive based on what our drivers see and also just our protocol for outreach in general. And this is a chance for me to make another plug for the Recycling Education Center we have down in South Seattle. We are happy to give tours and sort of provide people the 101 around recycling and get them inside of the building to see how this material actually flows through a recycling materials recovery center. So happy to have councilmembers there, happy to get staff down there. We've had Boy Scouts there, we've had Rotary Clubs there, we've had sustainability teams there. There was a student at Samamish High School last year who was down there several times and then joined us at a couple of events in Samamish to talk about how to also help people recycle right. So we take education outreach seriously. It's second to safety. Safety is our number-one priority in our communities and with our teams and with our trucks. But education outreach, we know the more we can do to help people understand what to put in each bin, whether it's the blue one, the green one, or the black one, we can all help kind of divert from landfills. And the recycling system is only as good as folks are putting it into the blue bins. So happy to go hear that public comment and follow up with that commenter. And also happy to send you more reports and work with Jen on any further ad hoc reports you might be interested in. And also, if you have ideas about who else we should reach out to, let us know. You'd be surprised how many people will call to come talk about recycling, and they don't actually schedule anything with us. So we are happy to talk to anybody anytime, virtually or in person in the cities or down at our recycling center. So help us, help your residents by letting us know when and where and how else we can do better to reach folks to give them the information.
Thank you, Wendy.
Councilmember Train, your light is still on. I'm not sure if that's an ult from the... Councilmember O'Farrell.
Wendy, I just had a quick comment. And kind of based on the public comment we received tonight from Paul Quinn. And he was talking about education around recycling garbage and particularly about composting also, and talking to local businesses about how they can further their education. Is, in relation to this contract and otherwise, is the onus on the customer, whether it's a commercial customer or residential customer, to reach out to Republic Services to receive the education? Or is that something that Republic Services proactively go out and say, oh, we need to go back to our commercial customers in Samamish and update them or continue their education because we have an issue or we haven't done it in a while? And then, when I think about education around residents, I think about educating of my own family, that my continuing education about what goes into the recycling bin, what does not, and constantly fishing things out of my recycling bin that they've put in there when they should know better. So, you know, is the onus on the customer or is it on Republic Services to continue this education? And I think sometimes the onus really should be on Republic to keep coming back to us and saying, hey, this is an ongoing problem. We keep getting X, Y, and Z in the compostable bin. And please stop doing that, you know? How does that work?
Several things. So yes, we are proactive. We do mailers and calendars every year. We have lots of resources on our website. So parents, teachers, there's a lot of educational resources out there by grade level that's available for download and printing and talking about these items. The organics law, so you had several questions in there, so I took a couple notes. But the organics work that's coming, we're proactive. We work with the customers when they call us, and we make sure we have the right bin sizes for them and the right frequency of collections for those commercial ones. Everyone in Samamish is going to be weekly organics going forward. And there's state law coming. So I'm not sure how versed you guys are in 1799, but an organics management law was passed in 2022. So we are all going to do a lot more organics diversion going forward based on the timeline the state legislature put forward. And rumor has it, they're going to tweak it and update it next time around. So we're all getting ready for the organics deluge that's coming for education outreach as well as collections and as well as citing facilities and figuring out whether it's going to become dirt or whether it's going to become energy. And where and how we do that in King County is going to be complicated given our geography and our population and our land use constraint issues. So yes, it's incumbent on Republic to do the outreach and education. Again, we try to reach people where they are. We have all of our materials in multiple languages on the website. The mailers there, mailers we found aren't the most effective way, so we're trying to do more social media. And again, that in-person work through farmers' markets, through sustainability ambassadors, through the schools, Rotary Clubs when they're interested in doing something. Everything around Earth Day in April is a big deal. And we're starting to talk about recycling and organics as the same thing, because it's really about diversion and pulling out of the landfill. And we always say, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle. The first thing we can do is not buy the stuff in the first place. But once we do, let's make sure we put it in the right bin. So yes. And at the curb with the residents, I think you mentioned, what do we do when we see things? So we also do cart tagging. So if we see a recycled bin or an organics bin that has contamination or looks like they might need some additional information, we leave a little note on the cart with additional information. And if we see contamination twice, they get on a call list and we call, email, or text and try to help reach customers. But we're not going to go knocking on their door and tell them to recycle better. We're just going to keep the soft messaging and the outreach that way in public. So we're not intrusive at doors that way.
Okay, thanks, Wendy. And yeah, it would be great if we will pass on this public comment to you if we were able to reach back out to our residents. That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Eager to go hear that and happy to follow up with Mr. Quinn.
I just had a quick question. There are some customers, the ones that don't have yard waste, they're seeing the largest increase of $17 a month. That translates to $204 a year, which is pretty significant. And so I know, I see that you're doing mailers to Kohani residents. Will there be specific targeted mailers for those customers? I believe there's about 1,000 customers.
I will probably do some follow-up emails if I have the email contact. And then, I think we'll be ready for the call center calls when the bills start. And I'm guessing your staff will probably also get some calls and inquiries. So we'll be ready to work with whatever inquiries come through. But the other thing to note about that increase is they're getting new service. And again, it said organics, right? So the one-third of Kohani customers that don't get organics will get it, starting on January 1st. So it's, it costs money to do that work, and it's new work. So I'm hoping that $17 might explain why with the new cart and the new trucks and the new opportunity to divert from the landfill. But that's, that's just the cost of doing that work.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that. I also understand like it is good customer service. I would rather, you know, send the letter out instead of waiting for complaints to come in.
Oh, I definitely don't want complaints. And one thing I'm planning with the HOA in Kohani is whatever meetings I might have, whatever Fourth of July picnics, you know, Valentine's, whatever, get-togethers, like, we'll do some boothing there. We'll have some opportunity to be available in person with the booth or at a meeting or whatever that HOA president thinks would be the most useful communication. So happy to take the lead on that, of course, with Ryan and your team since it's a partnership with the city. So the best way to communicate with them, I'm not sure if it's their newsletter or their email distribution list, but whatever communication channels we have, if there are forums that we can follow up with and if there are specific neighborhood pockets that are particularly concerned, if they might be a whole street that doesn't have yard waste and is not excited about getting yard waste. yard waste and is not excited about getting yard waste, I'm happy to sort of do neighborhood get-togethers and explain how that works. So we, we've been known to do that when we've had service changes or particular concerns or vegetation management issues. And when there are pockets of neighborhoods that really want to hear from us in person in someone's living room, we're happy to do that and we do that. And I actually do that personally.
Thank you. Can we have the motion be put back up on the screen? Would someone like to make the motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute the second contract amendment with Robanco LTD, DBA, Republic Services of Bellevue, in substantially the form of Exhibit 1 to amend the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables, and Compostables Collection Contract for the purpose of extending the contract an additional three years through December 31, 2028, and including Kohani in the existing citywide solid waste collection contract.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I just want to thank Republic and all of the staff who worked on this. And again, sorry to the residents that the rates are going up, but this is the industry and the reality on the ground at the moment. And I really appreciate everyone coming together to try to create some stability and predictability for our customers. And I do look forward to some of the changes in technology in the near future when we renegotiate this and maybe see some improvements. Thank you.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Do we get Kaylee's?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I say aye.
Thank you for, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, we will be hearing from Mike Sugg on the contract for lobbying services.
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor, could we extend the meeting at this point?
Deputy Mayor, I think we can get through this by no later than 10:30.
Motion to extend the meeting until 10:30.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. That is six, seven, motion passes. Six, one, sorry. Mike.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Mike Sugg, Supervising Management Analyst for the City Manager's Office. Your meeting packet this evening contains two proposed contracts for lobbying services, one with Luke Esser and the other with Nick Federici. Luke and Nick have been the city's lobbyists since 2018. They were the city's first lobbyists, and in that time, they have helped to advocate for the city's priorities alongside council and staff, helping to secure millions in funding for the city's fish passage culverts, as well as the Lewis Thompson Road Tightline Project, in addition to other things they've helped us with. Earlier this year, the city rebid those contracts, just not out of dissatisfaction with their services, but more just to ensure that the city is receiving the best services for the best price. Upon evaluation of the two proposals that we did receive, the staff committee is recommending that council authorize contracts with Luke and Nick to continue as the city's contract lobbyists. So that's that piece for council's approval tonight. We also wanted to discuss the process for developing legislative priorities, as that's going to be one of the first things that we do, assuming council approves the contracts tonight. Each fall, the council will typically adopt a set of priorities, which kind of form the basis for the upcoming legislative session. It helps provide focus for the city in our conversations with legislators and other partners. And historically, the council has either developed these priorities through a subcommittee or through council as a whole. Last year, you may recall that council formed a legislative committee to work through these and bring a recommendation back to council. Given your busy meeting schedule coming up this fall, we suggest that council tonight nominate three subcommittee members to serve on that legislative subcommittee. The committee can meet with staff and our lobbyists through October and come back in November for council discussion on their recommendation. And while that is going on, we can also begin scheduling meetings with our state legislators. So once those priorities are ready to go, we can hit the ground running with our advocacy. And so to summarize, staff tonight are looking for council's authorization of the two lobbying contracts in the packet, and we also suggest nominating three members to serve on the legislative subcommittee. And with that, I will turn it back to Deputy Mayor Lamb.
Thank you. I'll open it up for questions for Mike. Councilmember Howe.
Thank you, Mike. I thought that both, both of our lobbyists did a great job for us. And I, what other cities do they work for? Do you know?
I can pull the full list. It's available on the Public Disclosure Commission's website.
Okay.
But off the top of my head, I believe they're working for Yakima, Spokane, and perhaps Puyallup.
Yeah. I was trying to remember, but they, I was impressed with what they did. I thought they, they did a good job maintaining the relationships with the people we needed to talk to and securing appointments that we needed to have when we went down, when Councilmember Stewart and I went. Oh, and excuse me, Deputy Mayor Lamb as well. The, darn it, there was something I was going to kind of add to that. Oh, I, I'll just make this one comment. It's just that we also did something where we didn't have a lobbyist, where Councilmember Stewart and I stayed for Eastside Fire and Rescue, and that was considerably more difficult. So I think it's harder to understand why we would pay these funds and why it's important to do this, until you can kind of see and compare and contrast having it versus not having it. Having them there, I think, actually made the critical difference in us getting that funding. So I fully support bringing them both back on board.
Mike, do you have a recommended motion for council?
Yes. The recommended motion is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Luke Esser and Nick Federici.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I think Councilmember Howe said it. They've served us very well. I think that they have more than covered their costs with the assistance that we've gotten and getting our priorities addressed and getting funding. So I think they're great.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes. Let's talk about who would like to go down or who would like to be a part of the legislative committee. Do we have one more?
There's no one else. I'll do it. Sure.
Okay.
Did Kaylee want to? Sorry. Mayor? Sorry.
I think my only question was, is it just until the end of the year? I couldn't hear like what the timeframe was.
Yeah, this would just be an ad hoc committee to develop the legislative priorities. So it'd probably be through the month of October. I would anticipate approximately three meetings.
Oh, gotcha. So just for October. Cool. I would not like to volunteer.
Just timing-wise, that's just not.
Counsel, it's okay for there to be two. We're happy to work with whoever. We just can't have four. So I think that totally works, and we're happy to work with any councilmembers that want to be part of that. And again, staff will be part of that group as well as we'll bring in Nick and Luke to help us, you know, direct us and then come back to council in November for a recommended option.
Okay, great. And maybe somebody will have the, have the time to join that committee.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not that I don't want to. Timing-wise, that's not going to work out, so.
So next up is the city manager report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just have a couple of quick items. One is a reminder that council has all agreed to start the October 3 meeting at 5:30 for a joint session with the Planning Commission. Just want to be clear about that, just remind everyone. And then the other piece is, we've been having some discussions about changing the meeting day for the first meeting in November to something other than the 7th, which is a Tuesday. I believe we have consensus, but I want to do this where I can see mostly everyone and say, it appears that Wednesday, the 8th is, works for a 6:30 start for our regular meeting. Our city attorney is available, which I appreciate, and that's always a, you know, conversation that we have to have if we're going to move the date. But just want to get a head nod, and if so, then Lita can move forward with planning for the meeting on the 8th. All right, I'm seeing everyone.
My head is nodding.
Yeah. And I had, I chatted with the mayor about this, so I just wanted to do that in open session and clarify. So thank you for that. Appreciate that. And that's all I have, Deputy Mayor, for the moment.
Are there any council reports?
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, we had the EFOR Board meeting, and there is a budget variance in the positive. We've, revenues are coming in higher than expected. Expenses are as well, but the revenues are even higher. There was a recommendation by the Board to refer to the Finance Committee what to do with those extra funds. So there will be a FAC meeting coming up. All of that information is in the packet that Councilmember Howe forwarded out to the council. So if y'all want to take a look at that, if you have any feedback or input, please let us know. At the next, probably at the next board meeting, there'll be a vote taken. So if we have a recommendation, we can share that with, with the council. But it's, it's about $700,000 of additional funds. So the good news is there's no additional ask of the partner cities to contribute to the, to the funds at the mid-buy.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll be heading into a closed session. Collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to RCW 42.30.140. And how long would you anticipate us being in this closed session?
I would anticipate 15 minutes. But as it is a closed session, the OPMA does not apply to this. So just wanted to clarify that we don't have to announce duration.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. It's been a long night. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.